The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Order, Johnny, if you will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now begin with presentations. And this is Kathy, you want to?
Yep, our auditors are here, and if you wanted to come up to the bench and introduce yourselves. Everyone has their, the letters came in your packet and the hard copies of the auditor at your places.
Okay. I'm just going to quickly give you this one. This is kind of what we're going to walk through, so it kind of references that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, just goodness. I'm Joseph Defanti, the partner on the engagement.
And I'm Kathy Patnod, the senior manager on the engagement.
All right, so let's start off with significant changes. The only significant change from the prior year was the implementation of GASB number 84 for fiduciary funds. The only real impact of that on the town is the prior period adjustment for basically reclassing student activity funds from agency funds to a special revenue fund. And that's just the fiduciary fund definitions were revised, so that required the fund to be reclassed. So if it wasn't an error or anything like that, it was basically just implementing that standard. So we have the reports, you have the financial statements, ACFR. The name changes here, just instead of CFAR, it's ACFR. State single audit, and then the federal single audit, which you don't have, which will be issued this week. A lot of that was delayed due to the ARPA, and then clear on what the regulations and how to audit that type, that money. So the extent, there's an extension to September 30 for that, so you're not late or anything, but it will get issued later this week. So starting on, looking at the page in the audit report, it's in 68, is the opinion on the financial statements, and that's unmodified or clean opinion, which is the type of opinion you're looking to get. On page nine, 318, is the management discussion analysis. Again, this is a good executive summary of the fiscal year operations, talks about changes as compared to prior year, so it's a good executive summary. Recommend, if you want to get, kind of just get the big picture, to read that over. Talks about both the government-wide financials, which we won't talk too much, the accrual basis, those top statements, and then the fund financials, what the operations were. So in general fund, one of the areas it does talk about is the budget transfers. So basically, there were some significant transfers related to public works and highway, and it just discusses that those were the significant items during the year. Talks about major funds, and one of your major funds is capital projects. So that had a positive operations of almost 3.8 million, which was basically due to the debt issuance, issuance of bonds. So that fund fluctuates, next year it'll probably flip the other way as you spend the bond proceeds, so just the timing. Capital assets, there was a net decrease of the 5.8 million. Basically, that's depreciation in excess of capital asset additions. Long-term debt, you did have a net decrease of the 2.6 million, and again, that's the result of principal payments in excess of the new debt issued. Looking at page 22, which is the general fund. Exhibit C and D, your unassigned fund balance was 18,354,698, so that's 16.49% of budgetary expenditures and transfers out. The net change in fund balance on exhibit D was 3.7 million, and that was, we'll talk a little bit more what generated that, and a little bit farther down. The golf course, the increase in net position was 67, almost 68,000 due to increased revenues. The waste collection fund, there was a decrease in net position of almost 150,000, and that was basically due to increase in the tipping fees. The internal service fund had an increase in net position of the 405,000. Now, the footnotes, there's no significant changes to the footnotes other than that prior period adjustment note. We did update the coronavirus footnote because the impact wasn't, is a little bit more known, so that contingency note kind of changes, talk about it's that the town didn't see a significant impact, and you'll continue to monitor that. It also shows you some of the federal grants that were, that the town will receive, you know, ARPA and SRR and those type of things, what was used to offset some of those costs. So general fund budgetary basis, RSI, that's on page 80 through 82. So revenues were in excess of budget of 1.6 million. Expenditures were under budget by the 600,1,000, and then changing in commerces. So those numbers together basically is what generated your 3.7 million dollar increase in fund balance. The significant revenue variances that generated that, your property taxes, were 637,000 higher than budget. Charges for services were the 1.1 million higher, and mostly coming from town clerk fees, conveyance taxes, and building permits. This was pretty consistent across all our clients, you know, due to COVID and people staying home and home sales. All those revenues pretty much were across the board at all of our clients. Significant expenditure variances, public safety was under budget by 124,000. Most of that was the fire department being 107,000 of that difference, and education was underspent by the 380,000. As far as the pension funds, you end up with a net liability of about 30 million dollars. You know, the pension fund is now 70% funded as compared to the 66% in the prior year. There was an increase in net position of the 19,680,000. Most of that is due to the change in fair value investments, so the 21.1 million dollars. And your real rate of return last year on your pension investments was 25.82%, almost 26%. So as far as OPEB, that's your liability is 56, almost 56,000,700,000. But that's not a funded plan, it's as pay as you go, so that liability probably creeps up a little bit each year because it's not funded.
On your state single audit, we tested the open choice grant and the payment low taxes state-owned property, and we had no findings or question costs on either of those grants. For the federal single audit, we tested child nutrition and the coronavirus relief fund, and also had no findings or question costs. You also received a communication with those charged with governance. We discussed our responsibilities, we discussed that we're independent, and any adjustments, there weren't any material to bring to your attention. We also issued our recommendations. We resolved the recommendations from last year on, or they were resolved, the capital asset lives, the district payroll view, and some of the golf course recommendations. The recommendations that are in the letter include town purchasing and accounts payable about the vendor approval process and segregation of duties, town payroll with implementing segregation of duties, the golf course revenue, the recommendation that remains in there is about the logins, and having separate logins for every employee. Education purchasing and accounts payable, the recommendation is about vendor approval process and segregation of duties as well. Cafeteria cash receipts, we recommend that they are recorded based on sales. Student activities, we recommend implementing segregation of duties there as well. Scholarship funds, we recommend that those are recorded in the general ledger, and as a best practice, we recommend that the town implement a fraud policy. And considerations for next year, for fiscal '22, GASB 87 on lease accounting will be implemented. We have a tool that we'll be sending out to help evaluate leases, so essentially, anything that's recorded as an operating lease right now will need to be evaluated to see if it needs to be recorded as a liability in the financial statements. And next year, the ARPA spending will also be a consideration for the federal single audit.
So those are the highlights. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We'll open up for questions. Brian?
I just have one simple question. I think it might be more of a question for Kathy and the town team. You have a number of good recommendations here. I'm just curious to know if there is a plan, that they were discussing, if the plan is to implement them, and what that might be.
I think we're always trying to implement what they're doing. I think some of the, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, with the segregation of duties is, some of it is how we're set up and how many employees we have, but I do know that, Joe, they did hit some of the recommendations of last year, and we do aim to do some of the recommendations that they have on the list.
No, I'm very grateful for that. So, and I'm glad that we have those recommendations, we take them seriously, and we do something about it, so in your court.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah. Could you expand upon the recommendation of the fraud policy? Is that, does that speak to preventive measures that would be in that policy, or how we would react to a fraudulent situation?
The policy is more how you would react to it, and kind of basically just setting the tone, that's saying fraud will not be tolerated, and you know, it could be, you know, termination. And it does also give some examples as far as communication when it's discovered of what the communication chain should be. And again, example, the examples that are in there are things like putting time on your timesheet that you didn't work, or taking home copy papers. So a lot of times, those things aren't really thought of as, I mean, steal money. So also just gives examples of what's considered fraud, so it's kind of an education tool for employees, and then it communicates to them the town's policy, usually hopefully zero tolerance, and then what may happen if fraud is committed.
Gotcha, so it lays out the policy as well as some steps that would be followed if fraud was detected.
Right.
Yep.
Exactly. And we can provide a sample of that if we have it in the past, that we've, other, other of our clients have implemented this.
Have most of your clients implemented a fraud policy?
I'd say at this point, most. I've been recommending it for 20 years, so it's not always the first or second time, but it's just, it becomes some, you know, whether it becomes a priority or just timing of policies. But I'd say the majority, more than 75%, have implemented the fraud policy.
Thank you. No questions, thank you.
Joe? Well, thank you.
None for me.
Johnny? Okay, pretty good.
One question that I may have missed, so I apologize for that, but you had mentioned on the front sheet of the sheet, you were talking about the general fund gaps, the unassigned fund balances examples, C and D, and I didn't see those, and if you could just expand on that a little bit?
So exhibit C and D, or?
Yeah, it was item number 22 and 24.
Yeah, 22, that's the page number in this book.
Oh, okay.
So if you looked at that page and the third number from the bottom, should be unassigned, the 1,8354,698, and that 16.49%, so that the town has a very healthy fund balance. All the rating agencies keep revising what they consider healthy, but you're in a good window with that amount. Did you find that first column, third number from the bottom?
Ah, okay, thank you, yep, thank you. And that was for what?
That's your unassigned fund balance, that's kind of what the rating agencies, that's their favorite barometer as far as your financial health.
And that's a good thing?
Yes.
Financial health is a good thing, and that's why you're here, so thank you.
Bringing out the good.
We're very happy with our AAA bond ratings.
Yes.
Just one question, on pension, we're 78.08 funded right now. What are you seeing as sort of your average of your clients?
You know, so I'll just kind of use a benchmark, 80% is considered well-funded, so you're right on that line. You know, this year with the market, we have some clients that are now 100% funded, so hopefully, if the market holds, then, you know, everybody's in a good position, but you know, the market would increase was the main reason for your, that increase up to that amount. But 80% is, again, what would they say is well-funded, so you're right there.
Good. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you for coming in, thank you for your report, keeping under that two-hour time limit.
Sure, yeah, I did my best.
What's that, Joe?
I have a question.
Yes.
Actually, I have a request. Can you just talk to them, the accounts of the ARPA, and what you're seeing with ARPA, and the account of ARPA?
Okay, all right, that's, that's.
Joe's trying to fill in the two-hour time limit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess I, so talk slower. So ARPA is, it's kind of all over the place as far as what, what clients are doing. We recommend everyone, and it was almost 100%, to use revenue replacement because that gave you more flexibility in the spending, because once you said there was a revenue loss, then now what you can spend the money on is a little bit less restrictive than those four big categories, and water and sewer, and you're a big community, and you actually probably had products, you could have done that, a lot of small communities, like my little town, and we have no water and sewer, so it was very limiting on what we could spend it on. So, so kind of, once you use revenue loss, it allows you to spend it on provision of government services, which is a pretty broad description of what you can spend it on. So it's pretty much, almost anything except for pension and debt service are two specific items that are excluded under ARPA. But clients are doing, using it for capital items, there's clients taking applications from nonprofits, there's some clients that paid some bonuses out, so it's kind of, just depending on how the town decided to kind of look at that. So it's, all those are allowable under the grant, so just be, a lot of towns form committees to discuss how they might want to spend it, so there is, so that's why I think there's so many diverse ways that it's being, actually being spent. But the revenue loss, the $10 million exemption, you know, of course, they didn't tell us that till December, so at least now we know for this year's payment that exemption's available. So that's, that's what we are seeing, some clients are holding, some, a few clients have put it in the budget to balance the budget. We tend to recommend against that because next year, you have to solve that problem, and I think from a, rating agencies looking at spending on capital or one-time things is probably preferable, but it is all over, you know, almost every allowable category. We're seeing some clients spending in those categories.
Did you have a lot of people spending it before the December redefinition of revenue loss?
No, I don't think, I think we might have had one client that spent it on one small thing, but most, most clients hadn't spent it by June 30. I mean, the window started March 14th, but you didn't get the money until mid-June, but technically, expenditures were eligible in that window to apply to, but I think it was only one, one client that applied just a very small amount to that, and most clients are spending in fiscal '22.
Joe, is there anything else? Any further questions?
I have one.
Sure.
So what happens if you don't spend the money by the deadline? And what is the deadline actually for the ARPA funding? Is there one?
Well, it's, yeah, it's like December 2024, but you know, conceptually, since almost everything is eligible, it'd be hard not to consider it spent once you do revenue replacement, because the revenue loss, so once you claim revenue loss, any, almost any expenditure would be eligible, so you could put it in your general fund and accounts as spent.
So we have our ad hoc committee, a couple of the members here, so for a large capital project, let's say, if we were to do it for the 1928 building, then we're going to say we've already lost that revenue? So how does that work? Break it down to a girl who doesn't do the books.
So the revenue loss calculation just kind of addressed what was going on with the pandemic, and maybe some communities actually lost a lot of revenue, so that was a way to, you know, to try to make them whole. So that kind of, I equate it to being like a performance grant, if you lost money, then you earned the grant.
Right, but for like a new project, for example, because the 1928 building would technically be a new thing that we're looking at, the town's looking at.
Yep, so the confusing part is the revenue loss, basically by applying that, what that does is removes a lot of the restrictions, so it doesn't have to be just water and sewer and, you know, premium pay and that type of thing. So it allows you to spend it on, we'll say, provision of government services, so it could be a project or that type of thing. So all those, the revenue losses is kind of an eligibility thing, it doesn't change how you appropriate the money.
Okay.
Other than you have more flexibility when you go to appropriate the money.
Okay, so for our purposes, even if we don't spend the money by 2024, let's say, that's still earmarked for whatever project we decide as a town to do.
There are some commitment requirements, if you're going to do a project, it has to be committed by 2024, and then I think spent by two years later, because everyone's going to be doing construction projects, so I don't know how all these construction projects are actually going to get done, so there is some flexibility, but you have to have like a commitment, a signed contract to do it, and then, so that'll allow you to spend it after 2024, but there is a, there is a, it has to be done by, I think, '26.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. All right, we're good, thank you very much, appreciate you coming out. Okay. Moving on to item D.
I think item D, Maureen, I think reads the legal notice.
The legal notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Monday, April 4, 2022, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Council's proposed budget. View the Town Council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 on the Town website, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 21st day of March, 2022. Kathleen A. Valansky, Town Manager.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on the Town Council's fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. The decisions that we made pertaining to this budget were based on several factors. The town's strategic plan, our seven-year capital plan, our long-term financial forecasts, and the current economic climate. The Town Council adopted this budget unanimously, and our overall goal is to maintain the excellent services we've all come to know in town, and also continue to be fiscally responsible and proactively paying for the future needs of the town. Prior to this presentation, the budget went through several review views and adjustments. In January, department requests began coming into the Town Manager. At the January 11, 2022 Town Council meeting, the Town Council set an expenditure target of no more than 2.75% increase for both the Town and the Board of Education. The budget target was slightly more conservative than our long-term financial forecast of 3%, but considering the economic uncertainties, the Town Council felt this was an appropriate starting point. The Town Manager decreased her department requests by $751,717, which reduced the overall budget increase from 5.1% to 2.74% prior to presenting it to the Council. The Board of Education forwarded their request for a 2.99% increase on February 8. Both the Town Manager's capital improvement plan and recommended operating budget are included, they both include the Board of Education's budget. A public hearing was held on the Town Manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan on February 22, 2022. A public hearing was held on the Town Manager's recommended operating budget on March 8, 2022. We, the Town Council, held workshop sessions on March 9 and March 10 to finalize our budget. We added $170,000 to the pension fund and $8,000 for a comfort dog to the police department budget. These changes were incorporated into the Town Council's proposed budget. The budget was unanimously approved at the March 10 budget workshop meeting. Tonight is the public hearing on the Town Council's proposed budget. I'm going to highlight some key policy and financial points of the budget, and then we'll turn the presentation over to the Town Manager to review the budget in detail. Our increase in capital funding. The proposed general fund appropriation to support the first year of capital improvements is $3,881,000. That will bring our three-year capital improvement plan to an average of 2.5%, which is what our target is for going forward and in the past. Two years ago, due to unprecedented times, the Town Council significantly reduced the capital spending. The choice at that time was made to not significantly reduce town services, but instead to reduce the capital spending, and we did this with the understanding that this would be a short-term solution. Last year, the budget did increase capital spending. A large focus was placed on the Farmington High School building project last year, but it was important that the community know that the Town Council and the Board of Education would continue to fund infrastructure projects throughout our town, specifically projects that were included in the Board of Education's K-8 code analysis and ground survey. Our debt. Managing the town's debt is a key component to ensure that municipality is financially solid. Mootings recent rating service recently reaffirmed our AAA bond rating, that is the highest financial rating that we can get as a town. Because of current conditions, the town was able to issue 40 million in debt, some of that was ahead of schedule. Most of the bonds, 3.72 million, will be used to finance the construction of the new Farmington High School. The decision to increase debt this year was to take advantage of the lower interest rates that we currently have. That should benefit us for many years to come. Funding the town's long-term liability Funding the town's long-term liability is another top priority for the Town Council. The Town Manager's budget, the required pension contribution account, has been increased due to the Retirement Board's decision to reduce the assumed debt of return on pension investments from six point seven-five to six point, excuse me, six point eight-seven-five to six point seven-five. The Retirement Board established a two-year, a policy two years ago to reduce the assumed debt return, rate of return on the pension investments by an eighth of a percentage each year until it reached six and a half percent. At our budget workshop meetings, we determined that we had the ability to lower the rate of return to the six point two-five. Six and five-eighths would be not a significant increase in our taxes. We did this in anticipation of the next year's reduction from the Retirement Board. So we added, that included one hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the pension account. We have a proven history of funding the town's long-term liabilities. That is one of the important factors that the rating services take into consideration. And that's how we have achieved and maintained our triple-A bond rating. If the Town Council's proposed budget is approved tonight, the following are the next steps. The proposed budget becomes the Town Council's recommended budget. This will be sent to the annual town meeting. The town meeting is to be held April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M. in the Farmington High School Auditorium. This meeting will also be live on Zoom. Only those who are in attendance at the meeting may ask questions, so keep that in mind. Annual town meeting will then be adjourned to a referendum vote, which will be April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Everyone is welcome to show up for that one. This year, the recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of twenty-nine point three-two mils. This is an increase of point five-two mils or a tax increase of one point seven-nine percent. In other words, a hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value would equal two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars in taxes. The added cost for the average homeowner, whose house is assessed at two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, is a hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents. Farmington is a great town in which to work, play, and prosper. We remain well-positioned with our economic development, exceptional education, and providing a high level of services without substantially increasing our taxes. On behalf of the Town Council, I'd like to thank the Town Manager and her staff for their hard work on the budget, and also thank the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools for their hard work in producing a budget that was in line with the town's long-term financial forecasts. This is a fiscally responsible budget, which follows both our long-term financial plan and capital improvement plan. It meets the needs of both the town and the school system without overburdening our taxpayers. I ask all of the community to come out and vote and support this budget April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. I will now turn the presentation over to Kathy Blonsky, our Town Manager, and the Board of Education, who will present details of their budgets.
Good evening. Farmington Town Council and members of the public. I present for your review the Town Council's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The Town Council's budget target, the Town Strategic Plan, the town's capital improvement policy, and our long-term financial forecast were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating this budget. This budget is a maintenance budget that maintains our current high level of service and increases our capital funding levels. I will now review the Town Council's proposed budget. The budget is broken down into three categories: expenditures, grand list, and revenues, which are used to develop a tax rate. Expenditures. I will now review the expenditure portion of the budget. The total proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is one hundred and twenty-one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, an increase of five million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, or four point four-five percent above the current budget. Overall, this budget is a maintenance budget with no or very limited expansion of town services. Typically, our operating budgets have various drivers that increase expenditures. This year, there is not one specific budget driver that has increased the expenditures. That said, inflation, international fares, and COVID-nineteen supply chain issues are still a concern. In addition, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget included an additional pay period, which increased the personnel budget base. Town operations. The Town Council's proposed budget is thirty-three million, three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, an increase of one million, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, or three point two-nine percent above current expenditures. That's broken down to general administration has a two point six percent increase, public safety, two point five-five percent increase, public works, four point eight-two percent increase, community and recreation, three point one-one percent increase, and other six point zero-eight percent increase. Highlights of the town budget include the following. The public safety account includes the addition of a comfort dog at the police department. Personnel costs include twenty-seven pay periods in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. This budget includes twenty-six pay periods, which resulted in a significant reduction in personnel accounts. The contribution to the Farmington Library is two million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, which is a two point seven-four percent increase above current budget levels. The police fleet account includes funding for three new twenty-four-hour patrol vehicles. The development wing has been restructured with additional staffing. A part-time secretary in the fire marshal's office has been increased to a full-time position, and a part-time building official position has been increased to a full-time position. The highway and grounds operation account shows funding for four seasonal summer employees who will be used to supplement regular staff. A part-time dial-a-ride position in community and recreational services has been increased to full-time. The pension account has been increased due to a reduction in the assumed rate of return on pension investments from six point eight-seven-five percent to six point six-two-five percent. This is based on the recommendation of the Retirement Board. The health insurance account has increased seven point eight percent due to projected higher claims. Overall, utilities have increased five point four-six percent, with gasoline increasing nineteen point one-three percent. The town will realize savings in many cell phone accounts due to a change in our cell phone service provider. Expenditures by object. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supply, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increase for each of the object are as follows. The salary accounts have increased two point zero-two percent. The benefits, six point four-three percent. Supplies, four point nine-three percent. Equipment, eleven point oh-seven percent. Contractual, point eight-four percent. And utilities, five point four-six percent. The proposed total general fund appropriation is thirty-three million, three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, which is a three point two-nine percent increase above the current budget. The debt service group of accounts is proposed to increase by one million, thirty-four thousand, three oh nine, or twelve point five percent. The group of accounts includes funds to pay for lease financing obligations, clean water fund loan repayments, and the principal and interest due on existing debt. Also included in this account is a new debt service payment for a forty million dollar bond issued that took place on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. The forty million dollar issue has a term of twenty years. Most of the bonds, thirty-seven point two million, will be used to finance the construction of a new Farmington High School. The remainder of the issue will finance land acquisition, road improvements, and elementary school improvement projects. The bonds were rated triple-A by Moody's Rating Service. Special services. The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. This budget proposes a rate increase of eighteen dollars. The annual fee will be two hundred and seventy-two dollars per household. The proposed general fund appropriation to support the first year of the capital improvement plan is three million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand. This is above what we have historically been funding for capital projects. Since two thousand and five, through the town's capital improvement policy, our capital plan strives to contribute at least two point five percent of the general fund revenues to the capital budget each year. With a cash appropriation of three million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, the proposed capital budget contribution would be at three point two percent of general fund revenues in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Shown on the screen is the complete Board of Education and Town capital projects. There is no proposed bonding for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The total proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is one hundred and twenty-one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, an increase of five million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven oh three, or four point four-five percent above the current budget. I will now call on Alicia Bowman, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operation, to present the Board of Education budget.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to present the Board of Education's two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget to the Town Council and the community. The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year. Our mission, our vision of the global citizens, framework for teaching and learning, core beliefs, theory of action, and equity framework. This alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of these visionary core improvement documents. From initial school submission to the refinement of our operation budget, operating budget, through school and program reviews of all requests, zero-based budgeting practices were utilized. In addition, we were mindful and very thoughtful about the need to offset costs in this budget due to the federal S R three ARP grant funding and the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of this budget, here are the major messages of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. The Board of Education's budget maintains and advances academic excellence through innovative programming, pre-K through twelve. It promotes innovation in student-centered learning and teaching. It advances programming and resources aligned to the district's equity framework, supports student academic and social-emotional development, especially due to the impact of the pandemic. It moves and or reinstates much-needed personnel, academic supplies, facility projects, programming and technology off grants and onto the operating budget, some of which were reduced in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Factors in S R funding to offset costs to mitigate the overall increase in the operating budget. It contains costs through zero-based budgeting, reductions in efficiencies to maintain and advance current programming, and maintains class size levels in accordance with the Board of Education policy. This slide provides an overview of the recommended operating budget for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, with an increase of two million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, or a two point nine-nine percent increase for an overall total of seventy-four million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. This slide shows the school district's commitment to educational excellence along with fiscal responsibility. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts, with one spending the most and one hundred and sixty-six spending the least. It is important to note that Farmington ranks one hundred and six in the most up-to-date per pupil expenditure reports by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other school districts. The first budget driver is salaries, which accounts for sixty-six percent of the total budget. The budget increase in the salary line is three point four-six percent and reflects all negotiated contractual obligations. This series reflects all of the association's salary increases for the coming year, which are highlighted on the screen. The next budget driver is benefits, which accounts for sixteen point four percent of the total budget, and there is a point nine-three increase in benefits. This account provides a hundred percent of expected paid claims and the administration of employee health insurance. All associations have high deductible HSA with col insurance. It also includes life insurance and long-term disability costs. Services is the next budget driver, and it counts for fourteen point two percent of the total budget. There is an increase of two point four-six percent in the services series. This account provides for special services consultation services, tuition costs for outplacements, major facility projects, K summer school, technology-based operational systems. It also accounts for student transportation, professional development programming, and continuous improvement in teaching and learning. The next series is supplies, which accounts for two point six percent of the total budget. The supply series reflects a three point nine-eight percent increase. This account provides for facilities used in swimming and our hockey programs, and it also provides for the purchase of a wide range of supplies: instructional, health, custodial, computer, testing, textbook, library, AV and computer materials. This series experienced reductions in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and it reflects a reinstatement of funding. The equipment series, it is an increase of thirty point two-five percent, and this series accounts for half of a percent of the total budget. This account is facility and technology equipment. This series experienced a reduction in twenty-one, twenty-two as well, and reflects a reinstatement of funding. The major driver of increase in this is the restoration for technology equipment as the district transitioned to full one-to-one take-home devices. Dues and fees is the six hundred series, and that is actually a negative, negative two point five-three percent decrease, and it's point three percent of the total budget. This series accounts for memberships and organizations that support our strategic improvement efforts. It also includes the liability umbrella, motor vehicle insurance for the school district. And the reduction in this account is just due to the realignment of some funds into the correct account. Here is the view of the entire Board of Education's recommended operating budget, all of which I've reviewed within the presentation. And in summary, the Board of Education's recommended budget advances educational excellence, equity, student well-being, innovative teaching and learning, and the acceleration of learning aligned to our vision of the global citizen. The budget is responsive to our student needs, especially given the impact of the pandemic, and continues to help in the areas of academic progress and social-emotional well-being. The budget also reflects a reinstatement and or moving off of grants for much-needed facility projects, personnel, supplies, technology, and other areas of the budget, which were reduced in twenty-one, twenty-two. And now I'll shift quickly to the Board of Education's capital improvement budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. And this slide provides an overview of the Board of Education's capital budget requests for the coming fiscal year. Our long-range K-eight facility review, K-twelve security recommendations, equipment replacement schedule, as well as custodial input are used to create our seven-year capital plan with updates to that plan during each budget cycle. This slide represents our requests for the coming fiscal year and twenty-two, twenty-three. Our total capital improvement request is three million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. This shows an overview of our seven-year capital improvement plan, which represents our long-range view of our short and long-term goals. Thank you for your attention to the Board of Education's twenty-two, twenty-three operating and capital budget requests.
Thank you.
The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a point-two-one percent increase. The personal property account shows a two point five-one percent decrease. And the motor vehicles account shows a twenty-five point two-two percent increase. In summary, the grand list increased by one point seven-two percent, or sixty-four million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars, for a total grand list of three billion, seven hundred and ninety-seven million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Some areas to note that the motor vehicles increased by twenty-five point two-two percent. Overall, we've seen an increase in the value of cars in Farmington. This is considerable growth and has driven the overall increase in the grand list. Revenues. I've broken down revenues into eight categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, others, and the Westwood's contribution. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are eleven million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, or an increase of eighteen point four-eight percent increase over the current year. Some areas to note: state and federal grants have substantially been increased from last year. The town received an additional one million, six hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars in pilot funds from the state of Connecticut. Charges for service revenue is expected to increase due to the strong real estate market. The town clerk's office has been able to collect a significant amount of revenue from the conveyance tax and recording fees. Other revenue includes payments from the other major users of the wastewater treatment plant. These payments represent their share of the cost of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project completed in two thousand twenty. These payments will be less each year based on the twenty-year payment schedule. These payments will be less each year based on the 20-year payment schedule. Proposed tax and mill rate. The proposed general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 29.32 mils, an increase of .52 mils, or a 1.79% tax increase, or a $117.23 yearly increase for the average homeowner. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,932 in taxes. The annual town meeting is April 18, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Farmington High School Auditorium. Members of the public will have the option of attending in person or virtually over Zoom. However, only those attending the meeting in person will be able to ask questions. The town-wide referendum is Thursday, April 28, at your usual polling place. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will open up the public hearing to any public comment on this topic only. We will have a further public comment for questions concerning other issues. Is there anyone here present in the council chambers who has any questions? Seeing none. Kat, do we have anyone online who has their hand up?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. We see no hands raised for public comment outside of the chambers also, so we will move on. Item E, new items, seeing none. We will now move on to general public comment. So if there's anyone here in the council chambers who would like to ask any general questions on any topic other than this public hearing we've heard, seeing none. Kat, do we have anyone in the public raising their hand on other topics?
No, we do not.
Okay. Seeing none, we're moving on to reading of the minutes. Joseph?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the March 8, 2022 regular town council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the March 9, 2022, regular town council meeting for the budget.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
And I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the March 10, 2022 regular town council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passing unanimously. Item H, reading of communications and written appeals.
You have four various, no, actually five, because we have two number twos, so five various correspondents in your packets. I don't know if you have any comments or questions?
Great. Any questions or comments? If not, moving on to item I, reports of the committees. 1928 Building Ad-Hoc Committee.
So there's currently a survey on our website that's been out for about a week and a half, and it will be on there until 4/11. If you go to the main page and scroll down, you'll see it in the news feed. It's easy to get to. It's exciting. We've had 700 responses so far, but the more the better. Our next meeting for the ad hoc committee is going to be on 4/19 at noon to discuss recommendations or possible recommendations back to the council.
Great, thank you. Farmington High School Building Committee.
We met last Wednesday where we voted to approve our structural peer review forms. We also shortlisted our firms for code review services for RFP, and we also shortlisted our structural peer review services. Our next meeting is canceled, so the following meeting, April 27, will be our next time that we're in person.
Thank you. Green Efforts Committee.
Green Efforts. So we have a meeting tomorrow night. We, tomorrow morning at, where's my notes? Tomorrow morning at 8:45, some of the members and also some attendants here will be there to judge posters on anti-idling from the fifth graders at Westwood, so if anybody's interested, come and join us. I'm sure it'll be fun. Our cleanup day is this month, on April 23. It'll be at IAR this year, so there's no confusion. So the cleanup day's at IAR. There'll also be a townwide yard sale at IAR during the same time. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Are they having the competition for the most trash picked up again this year?
They are.
Great. Okay, so get as much trash as you can, bring it to IAR, to be disposed of properly. Land acquisition.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Racial equality task force.
We meet tomorrow at 6:30, and we'll be on Zoom.
Great. Okay, we'll move on to item J, report of the council chair and liaisons, starting the council chair. Just a few things that have been going on since our last meeting. Unionville Museum, I believe, broke ground since our last meeting. They are still open for business, so go over, see the great work they're doing, and you can still visit the current museum. This weekend, there were a couple of nice fundraisers in town. The Community Chest resumed after a two-year hiatus. Their wine tasting fundraiser, they had great success, great crowd showed up, but I think people were happy to have an opportunity to gather again. Also, the East Farms Fire Department, they had their pancake breakfast Sunday morning, also had a great crowd. I saw a number of the folks up here at those events, so I know we enjoyed eating and drinking over the weekend. So good fundraisers. Also, just a reminder, the Explore Farmington website, also their Facebook page, is a great source to find out what's going on in town throughout the coming week. They'll update that on a regular basis, so take a look, see what events you can get to. As far as the police side of things, there have been, with the weather changing, a bit of an uptick in car-related crimes, so just remember, keep your cars locked, don't keep anything that is valuable in plain view. If you can, if you have a garage, put it in the garage, just be smart. The advent of spring, some days these past weeks, it's felt like it, some days it hasn't, but hopefully we'll all have more of an opportunity to get outside and enjoy our great trails, our fields, and the riverfront. Just please remember, when you're out there, respect the outdoors, respect the other people. If you carry it out, carry it back home. We have trash receptacles, you can bring a bag with you, just clean up after yourself, so respecting everyone else. And the last thing Johnny mentioned, but I think it bears mentioning again, the 1928 building survey is out there. It has a number of questions. We're looking into a number of different options on what could be done with that building, everything from, you know, is it going to be demolished, to is it going to be brought up and a great center for the town going forward. So take a look at the survey, give us your input. The more people that can participate in that, the better we know what your beliefs are, and then we can start moving forward and trying to make our final decision on that. With that, I will move on to conservation and inland wetlands.
So before I give you an update, I just wanted to take a minute to explain what the committees are. So a lot of times, we talk about different committees, and unless you are up here and have knowledge, you don't really know what the committees do. So first, the Conservation Commission is responsible for promoting the development and conservation of natural resources, including water resources. Inland Wetlands Commission is responsible for the permitting of all regulated activities conducted upon or upland of an inland, wetland, or water course. So Inland Wetlands and Conservation met on March 2. Inland Wetlands voted in favor to approve the town's application to replace a backup generator at 11 Harlan Road and also at 40 Patterson Park Road. They also approved the removal of invasive plants, the bittersweet sections, I see Russ in here, along portions of Meadow Road and Red Oak Hill. So those are just a couple of the things that they do. Conservation Commission would like to plug the household hazardous waste, and Johnny also mentioned the annual townwide cleanup day on April 23.
Thank you, Sophia. Board of Education Liaison.
That's me also, no new updates.
Great. They're meeting right now, as a matter of fact.
Yes, they are.
Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. The biggest issue here is we're hoping to put up the signs on the trails, which will be some type of wayfinder signs, letting you know what you can reach as you're departing the trails, and what's nearby, place to eat, place to visit. Economic Development Commission Liaison.
Yes, the Economic Development Commission participated in the Chase Bank ribbon cutting, which was held on March 22, and the bank is now open for business on Route 4 across from the Bank of America, and they're excited to join our community. And the next EDC meeting is April 13 at 5:30.
Great, thank you, Ed. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you. We'll be discussing the most interesting thing coming up, so I won't reiterate, and we'll discuss it later.
Great, thank you. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Human Relations Commission.
So again, I just wanted to plug and explain what the Human Relations Commission does. They are responsible for fostering a mutual understanding and respect among all members of our community. Their purpose is to encourage equality of treatment and opportunity for all. They met on March 28, and they heard a presentation by the Farmington High School Social Justice Club on Social Justice Week activities in February. The HRC also adopted the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Anti-Semitism at their last meeting, and they'll plan on presenting to town council at a future date.
Great. Library Board.
Library Board met on March 16. Nothing to report.
Okay. Town Plan and Zoning Liaison.
Couple things from TPZ. They met on 21st. The land trust is going to begin construction this summer at their new location at 119 Copper Mine Road. The Town Planning and Zoning Commission approved the town's plan for a special permit to build the high school, so big news. And then one thing that came out of the public comment about the high school was concern on Crestwood Circle about buildup of cars for drop-off and pickup, and they were hoping that that could be addressed in the new design. So I'm sure Johnny, somebody said that to you at some point in this building project meeting, so I'm not asking for anything, just passing it along. That's it.
Great. Unionville Historic District Commission.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Union Village Improvement Association.
You already mentioned the groundbreaking of the museum, and nothing else to report there.
Sorry, didn't mean to step on the other one.
Oh, no problem.
Water Pollution Control Authority.
Only to reiterate that they're doing a 0% increase this year.
Great. Any other liaisons, boards, or commissions? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to item K, report of the town manager.
You have my written report. I do have two items, the Memorial Day Parade update. So each year, as you know, the town partners with the veterans to host the Memorial Day Parades. In 2020, the parade was canceled, and in 2021, the town held one parade beginning on Route 4 and ending at the town hall due to COVID-19 restrictions. Due to the sidewalk construction on Main Street in Farmington and the construction on the Unionville Bridge, the regular parade routes are not accessible. It's my suggestion that we hold only one parade in Unionville this year, beginning on Perry Street, going through Unionville, and ending at the town hall. The parade would form at 9:30 AM and step off at 10 AM, and if there's consensus of this plan, I could reach out to the veterans and see if it would be acceptable to them.
Sure. Why don't we get a consensus? Lots of questions? Brian?
I just had, yeah, one quick question, because I'm excited about this. When is the sidewalk project going to start?
Russ, when is the sidewalk project going to start?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks.
Excellent. It won't be done in time for the parade?
It's a long sidewalk.
It's going to be a nice sidewalk, though.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of... I'm very excited.
Any other questions? Just one comment I'll make on the parade also. The school was very excited to have one parade, not two parades. If they said if there were two parades, they would actually have to limit participation in each of the parades, so they were very in favor of this. I think most people organizing the parade, because there are very few people who actually volunteer to organize it, so if anyone out there would like to help, please do so, are looking forward to this as well, and the logistics just dictate this would be the best course of action. So if there are no other questions, I'll just look for consensus. Does everyone feel good about one parade from Perry Street to town hall? All good? Okay, any objections? All right, there you go, Kevin.
And then just, I'm suggesting that the second town council meeting on April, which is April 26, this meeting, the second meeting of the month, is typically a workshop meeting that focuses on a particular topic. I'm suggesting that the second April meeting will be the ad hoc 1928 Building Committee survey results and recommendations from the ad hoc committee. So we'll have our results back by then. The ad hoc committee can meet, I forgot what you said, Johnny, like April 14th or 19th, somewhere around there, and then we would come and have our recommendations, and I think the thought was, is that the survey would be, we'd have the person, our survey person, give the town council a presentation.
Right, so we can hear what all those people who responded, and all the extra ones, we've got about 700, so I'm sure after everyone watches this meeting, that number's going to balloon up to probably 1,200 or something like that.
14.
Okay, we'll go with that, I like it. Like your positive thinking. So that's good, April 26 will be for the 1928.
28 building, yep.
Great, okay. Anything else?
No, that is it.
Okay, Joseph, do we have a motion to approve the town manager's report?
I make a motion to approve Tom Ayers' report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Do we have any appointments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion for agenda item L9, that Nancy Fitzgerald be appointed to the Greater Hartford Transit District for the balance of four-year term, beginning immediately and ending June 30, 2022.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
This was a recommendation from the Greater Hartford Transit District. Their member, Groh, has resigned, and Nancy Fitzgerald had reached out to them and asked if she could be appointed, and the Greater Hartford Transit District was very excited to have her.
Great, okay. Any questions?
Did I hear correctly, it's June of '22, so you're looking at about two months?
Yeah, you got the wrong date. Thank you, Johnny.
Huh. Maureen, I don't, I'm not sure, we don't do the appointments.
Yeah, I don't have it with me.
It might have to be a two-month appointment just to get her on there, and then we might have to re-up it in June.
Yeah. Why don't we get her on, and then if we have to re-up, we'll re-up her.
Good catch.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Item N, M, old business, seeing none. Item N, new business. Did we, did we vote?
We have to affirm it, right?
Oh, he didn't vote. Thank you for catching me, there you go. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the Greater Hartford Transit District. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Getting ahead of ourselves. Now, we have no old business, we will go on to new business, item N.
And I make a motion to approve the town council's recommended budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. This is our opportunity to ask any further questions or make any further comments on our recommended budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Any additional comments? We all had great conversations earlier. I think we can stand by a budget we all felt pretty comfortable with when we put together last time. So if there are no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, moving on. Make a motion that the attached resolutions be approved, and that items 1 and 2 be forwarded to the annual town meeting, with the recommendation that they be approved.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
The attached resolutions contain the items to be considered at the annual town meeting. These are the items that the town council has considered and approved at your meetings on March 8 and 10, and April 4. Traditionally, the town council forward these items to the annual town meeting with the recommendation that the resolutions be approved. And then you can see where the different items are. Item 1 is the annual town report. Item 2 is the budget. Item 3 lists the voting places, and item 4 calls for a second town meeting if the referendum fails.
Great. Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the attached warning for the May 2, 2022, second town meeting, and the May 12, 2022 referendum.
Second?
You have to have a warning.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Ahead of the game. You have to have a second warning for a second town meeting if the referendum, first referendum fails.
Great. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to exercise the opt-out provision in the Farmington Agreement with the Materials Innovation and Recycling Authority, MIRA, and sign a five-year contract with the Murphy Road Recycling LLC for refuse and recyclables disposal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
So you can see from our long note, I am recommending that we opt out of our long-term agreement with MIRA. Given you some background, but basically, MIRA is really struggling, and we do not feel that MIRA is going to potentially not be around. The... The new, the Murphy Road Recycling, many towns are going to them. It's less expensive for us. I think it's more stable, and in the note, I explained some different reasons why. And based on the current, based on the current uncertain nature of the solid waste situation in Connecticut and the number of communities that are leaving MIRA, I recommend that the town opt out of our contract effective July 1st, 2022. We've researched the communities that have opted out of their agreement with MIRA and conducted public bids to find a replacement contractor to provide MSW disposal and single-stream recycling services, and most of these bids, the low bidder has been Murphy Road Recycling LLC. In the discussions with Murphy, they've stated that they are willing to extend the terms of the low bid they've offered to other communities to Farmington. Specifically, Murphy Road has offered the following tip fees, and it shows the first year is $110, the second year $110, the third year $115, the fourth year $115, the fifth year $120, and recycling at zero. This tip fee is slightly lower than the MIRA tip fee, but more importantly, the five-year fee proposal is significantly lower than the tip fees MIRA is projecting over the same period. This would give the town a fee stability, predictability, and reliable disposal service over the next five years. We are required to notify MIRA if we were going to be opting out of it by the beginning of April, like I think next week. The town has studied this quite a bit and has gone back and forth, and it's really looking more and more, in my, our opinion, that the stability of MIRA is very, very uncertain at this time, and that we should, and it's, and it's less expensive to go to the Murphy Road Recycling.
Any questions? Brian?
No, go ahead, Ed.
Thanks, Brian. Just a quick question. Yeah, so it looks like this, you know, this would save us some money, which, which is a good thing. I'm just curious, because in the note here, you specified, I think, the first year for MIRA would be 111 per ton, Murphy would be 110 per ton, so that's a little bit less, that's great. And then you said it's a bigger difference going out five years, but what, like, what is the difference going out five years?
Joe, do we have the, the numbers on that? One of the things, though, before I have Joe answer that, is that MIRA is supplementing their fees by taking money out of their fund balance, basically, to pay, to make the fees lower. So that's one of the concerns, too, because it's not really a true cost of what the fees would be. And Joe, did they give us out the out-years on the numbers on that?
They, they made several forecasts over the course of time, and basically, you're looking at going out five years, if they don't supplement the tip fee, going out five years, it would be around $130 per ton range. This year, it actually should have been, next year, it actually should have been $116, but they're supplementing with their own money to keep the, try to be lower, $111. So when their funds run out and their reserves run out, you're, you're going to see that go up to the $130 range, $126, $130 range. They've done various forecasting on it, and, you know, and the other problem you have with, with the forecasting is, as noted in the note, the, as other towns opt out, it drives the cost up even further for them. So, and I, right, I just saw the newspaper this morning, I think there's 14 towns that have already opted, 48 towns, 14 have already, already opted out, which would actually be the 15th town.
And big towns, too, like Hartford.
Yeah.
Hartford, Manchester, a lot of big towns have opted out.
Thanks, Joe. That's, yeah, it sounds like we're, in that fifth year especially, we'll be saving substant, even substantially more, so, yeah, I think the cost savings are definitely going to be good for the town.
Keith?
I, uh, do we, do we, sorry, what was the next closest competitive bid? Because I know CWPM was in, like, I know that they're offering that service as well, right? Did we get other bids?
No, we didn't go out to bid. All the, a bunch of other towns went out to bid, and Murphy is in the low bid.
Yeah, I'd, I'd seen that, okay, I'd seen that as well. I just wanted to make sure that we had, we had information on that, and I had seen that with Murphy Road a little bit.
Yeah.
And then my other thing was with MIRA, was that there's some institutional things where they'd had some, just issues even being able to keep up with the removal of the waste. They had factory issues a couple summers ago, I was reading in The Current as well, right? So definitely seemed to make sense to be moving off of them wherever we go.
Rafina?
So I'm assuming this is a standard five-year contract. What happens after five years? Do we have to go back out to bid to whomever's out there at the time?
You know, probably, if the offer that we'd be working under the bid was a Wethersfield, Newington, Rockville bid, and that's what the terms are often extended to us, that does have a provision to renew it after five years if we want to. We could just renew again with Murphy Road, or we could go out to bid, we could see what the landscape is. There may be another option for MIRA at that point, we really don't know. Obviously, this is a, it's a, it's a very dynamic situation, and if there's not a lot of support, you do have to stay for MIRA also. The EDP is not the pan of MIRA, so we have to see what the state decides to do with MIRA, and, you know, probably, so, the short answer is probably in five years, your options are either to be to put it out to bid or to renew with Murphy Road.
Okay. And then the 14, I'm assuming that if we're all staying together, it's to the 14 towns that are with Murphy now, could we potentially partner with those other towns and then go out and block to bid? Or is it just an individual town initiative?
No, I think, I think we're all going to wise up in five years and realize that the way to do this is to do it on a regional basis, so the more towns that join in the bid, the better the rates we will get. I think what happened here was a lot of, in October, MIRA announced that they were shutting down, they've been talking all along about shutting down the plant, but I guess in October of last year, they confirmed they were shutting down the plant this coming summer, this July, and that they were to start, you know, shipping out garbage or trash out to out-of-state sites. And the assumption at that point was that, that we would all just follow along, you know, because they've been providing this service for us all along, we would just go along with it. And what really happened at that, when they made that announcement, was it opened the door to competition, and now there's competition out there, like Murphy Road, CWPM, or other providers, or I guess collectors, or disposal options out there. So I think as you get into this sort of development, and it becomes more of a regional thing, people, hopefully, the towns will band together in the future, and they go out to bid on this.
Yeah, well, it makes sense also, because we discussed, I think, I think it was Russ that mentioned about how there's actually no impetus for you to lower your, the amount of trash collected, because you actually pay more. So if there are 14 towns going together, and, you know, you can get a, a rate, it wouldn't necessarily matter if your town, you know, has less to dispose of. So, okay, thank you.
I had just one other quick thing, sorry.
Hold on, John, your Joe?
We, there's no, and there's no difference between, so Murphy Road is who's going to get rid of our trash. Right now, all waste, I think, collects our trash, the company on New Burton Avenue, right? Is that all waste? Waste material, sorry.
Collects our trash.
And there, there's no difference in where they're bringing our stuff now, right? They're not, is there any additional charge for bringing it to where Murphy Road needs it versus MIRA?
No, actually, it's going to the same, the MSW, the solid waste, will actually go to pretty much the same area as, as MIRA, the road around on Murphy Road. The recycling will not, it will go to Berlin, or Connecticut. They have a, Murphy Road has a recycling center they're opening up, again, it was in the paper today, a new recycling center opening up on, in Berlin, Connecticut, and that trash will go there. Russ did meet with our, our collector, and the, our collector is very high on Murphy Road, and actually, you know, was pushing that, or hoping that we went in that direction. He felt that they'd have a better operation, because right now, with MIRA, with so many trucks going there, his trucks actually get tied up in line and get, you know, to dump things, well, recyclables especially. So he was actually more excited that we were going to Murphy Road, because he felt it's a better operation.
Okay.
Brian?
Just one, one question, but I want to say, thank you for looking into this. I know we've been talking about it for some time, and I'm glad we have a solution, at least temporarily. But my question is, I'm glad to see that we have reduced, Joe, as you say, a reduced cost in the tipping fees, which means there'll be a savings for us. And we were just talking about increasing garbage removal. Is there a way that we might be able to pass on some of that savings to the town folk? Is that a possibility, especially for folks who are on a fixed income? That might be helpful.
I, I think, Joe, I'll just answer just in general, though, in that garbage has gone up so much money, and the fact that the savings and that we were only going up the, only $18 was really a very minor, so some of the savings and things, how we've been managing the garbage fund, I think that, but we'll be looking at that next year again to see what we can do, and if there is savings that we can do, pass along, we always are trying to do that.
Yeah, I know that there's more involved in this than I'm thinking about right here, but I'm just thinking that someone else is going to ask that question, so we may as well address it as well.
Sure.
So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Just a thank you, I mean, this is something that's nice to kind of finally get cleared up. It's, it's been a long time coming. We've known that MIRA was not likely going to be the answer, so I'm glad we came up with something here. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N5, to award bid number 312, removal of brush, stumps, logs, and wood chips to Wellcare Denali LLC of Farmington, Connecticut, at the cost of $68,710.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
This bid is to contract with a qualified vendor to remove the accumulated brush, stumps, logs, and wood chips that residents drop off at the town landfill site at, on Tungstus Beet Road. The town recently accepted bids for this purpose, a total of six bids were received, with We Care submitting the lowest bid. Funds are available in the landfill budget.
Great, motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N6, to appoint members of the Farmington Historic District and Properties Commission as a Farmington Historic District and Properties Study Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Kathy?
You can see from the letter that came from Shannon, our Town Planner, that the Farmington Historic District and Properties Commission has requested that the Town Council appoint their body as a Historic District and Property Study Committee for the purpose of creating new historic districts, expanding existing historic districts, and are designating new historic properties in, within Farmington. Once these additional properties have been identified and nominated for designation, the list will be submitted for endorsement and approval by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Town Council. In addition, property owners are given the opportunity to vote to become part of the historic district. So I think there's some people in the district or near the district that want to become part of the district, and they're setting, starting a new study committee on it.
Great. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Brian?
Just a question. I think we have the right group of people doing this job, but it's interesting, I'm just curious, this is an entirely separate subcommittee, it's not actually the commission doing this work, it's just a made up of the members of the commission. Correct?
I think that's my understanding, yes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. So they're all, they are all equal members?
No, you have members and alternates.
Oh, we do have alternates in the subcommittee as well?
On your sheet right here.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, I didn't know if that was the list of, and I know that the alternates were going to be included as members, that's what I thought. You were just identifying them as alternates. I didn't know if it was the same structure, I'm just curious.
Same structure.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N7, to approve the American with Disabilities Act policy engravance procedure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing, Kathy?
All municipalities must designate at least one employee to coordinate compliance with ADA and to adopt and publish grievance procedures. This is our policy, and we do this every April.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Eight?
Agenda item N8, to approve the fair housing resolution for the town of Farmington to authorize the Town Manager to sign, distribute said resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
April is how, a fair housing month, and the Housing Authority, the Community Recreation Service Department, and the Planning Department work jointly to achieve fair housing in Farmington. It's best practice to review and re-adopt this policy, and we do this every April.
Any questions or comments? Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N9, to adopt the Farmington Equal Employment Opportunity Program and Affirmative Action Plan for the town of Farmington.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Again, this is our policy, and that we adopt it every April.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N10, to adopt the compliance with the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 Statement for the town of Farmington and to authorize the Town Manager to sign and distribute said resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Again, we do this every April.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N11, to adopt the fair housing policy statement for the town of Farmington and to authorize the Town Manager to sign, distribute said resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Again, our, this is our last policy, and this is our fair housing policy statement.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N12, to set a public hearing at 7:05 p.m. on May 10th, 2022, in the Town Hall Council Chambers, to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 29, Fire Department.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
This is just setting the public hearing, but at the next meeting, we'd have, have